Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting. I want everyone to please rise and join us in the pleasure of the meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll call?
Jim, Dombek.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
James Shallow.
Here.
Jamie Davie.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Wren. Here. A former president.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? Moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's not moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Davie?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Shallow?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any issue? Okay, we'll move on then to communications, correspondence, informational items, various letters and newsletters. I see the federal government is going to be sending us money. That's what that newsletter said.
I don't know if that's going to make a huge amount of difference, but you know, every little bit helps.
Well, the federal government is releasing funds for safety, among other things, and hopefully some of that comes our way. Next item would be FOIA requests, and there was one, and it's been responded to.
Yep.
Committee reports. Kind of the off-season for committees right now.
To say the finance subcommittee has a meeting upcoming, but nothing.
Okay. SCF did meet a couple, one or two weeks ago, I think two weeks ago, and they have come to agreement, I think, with MOU, all good there, from their perspective, I think, and they have a candidate they're comfortable with for the part-time executive director position, also local, Sycamore grad, so all good. I think they're going to make that offer to that person, and be updated our bylaws, voted on those, and set our schedule for next year, that kind of stuff, so all good. You and I are going to talk about something, Laura was going to send me an email.
Yeah, she sent me an email with several points.
The summary of it.
Yeah, so I talked with Kelly a little bit about that. I need to do a little bit of lick work, and then I can follow up with her.
Okay, cool.
A lot of that will hinge on the final MOU, so I've communicated before about an updated MOU, but I don't have anything back from our attorneys yet.
Okay.
So that's still a work in progress, and I think some of that will hinge on changes, potential changes to the MOU, but yeah, she did send me an email with those things.
Any other committee reports? Move on then to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Last meeting of July, it's hard to believe that it's the last week of July, and just another week will head up August, school year is right around the corner, and everything is really starting to ramp up. Have two items tonight, the first is the second reading of the policy revisions. At this time, nothing has changed since the last meeting, so I'm recommending that the policy updates be approved as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the policy updates as presented? Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Pretty straightforward. Moved and seconded, roll call.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Shallow?
Yes.
Davie?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just one quick note on those policy revisions, one of those policies has to do with focal participation, so one of the things that Kelly's done a great job on is starting to revise the pamphlet that we hand out at board meetings. She'll finalize that now that that policy's been approved on second reading, so now that that's done, just know that that pamphlet will be updated with current information here shortly.
I think we should have a script that we can read. We probably should make it a practice of doing that before every audience, visitors, so that we say the same thing to everybody in a consistent fashion, which is write it down, so we have it in one place and one way.
I've had a little conversation with our attorney about that, just something that's clear-cut.
Yeah, doesn't have to be long, but just, yeah, clear-cut, concise, and the same.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, consistent.
Yeah.
Have you thought about, because you know, some of those kind of like what's before the board, including some of that in there, or the process of that, or however that is, because I mean, it's capped at 30 minutes now, right?
Yeah.
Like, just so that if there is a topic where, you know, somebody feels strongly about coming in, using their three minutes, that they're here on time, and that, I mean, if you're not one of the first 10, 11, 12 people, you may not speak, so just that.
Yeah, and the longer narrative, we should certainly have that, yeah.
I'll talk to Lauren Holt, and see if she can put something together with just kind of a summary of the changes.
That we can post on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're sending out the board, so.
Yeah.
Or use participation, or link or something, or not.
Yeah, good idea. The next bullet point, next item under superintendent's report is crisis plan review. I left my computer at my dining room table, so I'm going to stand up so I can be behind the computer for this. I apologize for that. So this really is the results of a previous meeting, I think the last meeting where we talked about just sharing some information about the crisis plan. I'll share some of that information, things that are probably the best way to put it is public. There is some information we specifically don't share. The last thing we want is for anybody to get a hold of that information, and then use that if they are planning something that would create, you know, injury or harm in this school environment. So just know before I get started that this does not include everything, but it includes information that is public. Our crisis plan has been in place for several years, it is required, but more importantly than that, it's best practice to provide guidance for our staff and our students in the event of an emergency. I've put two pictures here, there are some schools probably that have a crisis plan that goes in a binder and sits on a shelf, and may or may not be easy to find when you need it in times of emergency. Ours is very easy to access, and it's, it looks very similar to this in almost any classroom or office that you're in, rubber district. This picture's actually in our office, right beside my door and right by Kelly's desk, that safety plan hangs right there, so it's right by the door, easy to find, it's right next to, in our office, it's right next to the evacuation map, but it includes a tab for all sorts of emergency situations. Obviously, intruder is the one that's got the most attention here in recent times, but it does include everything, you know, the weather, fire, hazardous materials, and then of course, of course, in the event of an intruder. So once again, these are general protocols, they don't include all the details of our plan, so that non-emergency responders can't factor all those details into their planning, so the, again, in the event that somebody wanted to plan something on our schools, they don't have all of the details, how we communicate with first responders, with law enforcement, how we communicate with the community, some of those details aren't included, but we have those internally. Again, unfortunately, the part of the crisis plan that's received the most attention that has to do with intruders in the building. So in the past, crisis planning has evolved over time, and years ago, when I first became an administrator, in the event of an intruder, law enforcement, first responders, experts, really were telling schools, secure the door, get into a corner where you're out of sight, and just kind of hope for the best until emergency personnel arrive and escort you out of the building. Unfortunately, what's happened is that intruders oftentimes, unfortunately, find ways into the classrooms, and the offices, and into other spaces within the school. When they are determined, sometimes it's hard to stop them. So one of the things that law enforcement, safety experts have done is it's kind of changed their approach and what they recommend for schools. So more recently, schools have begun to follow a protocol very similar to ALICE, which I'll talk about a little bit tonight. There are other protocols that can be used, this is, I would say, the most common, this is the protocol that we use in accordance with conversations and planning with Sycamore PD and other local responders, so not only are we well-versed in the plan, but Sycamore emergency responders and county emergency responders are the free well-versed in the plan as well. ALICE stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. So this is just a brief description, again, this is public information, this happens to be right off the ALICE website, so if you do a Google search for that, you'll find this information, and I just broke it down, A, alert, obviously becoming aware of the threat, one of the key points there is overcoming denial, that, you know, this isn't a ploy, this isn't a game, you know, this is real, and being prepared to act. When evacuation isn't an option, then lockdown is the part of the plan that comes into play, and that's more than just locking the door, it's securing the space, creating barricades, and then using mobile devices to communicate. I'll talk a little bit about information and communication in the next one, and preparing for the possibility of an intruder gaining access to that space. I stands for inform, communicating information about the situation, maybe two-way communication between school personnel, staff, people inside the building, as well as with law enforcement, first responders outside of the building. One of the best things we can do is share information so that everybody is as aware as they possibly can be about the situation and can make the best decisions. C stands for counter, since ALICE makes this very clear, they do not encourage actively engaging intruders. They still promote locking down the space, taking cover, but being prepared to counter if it's a last resort, so if the intruder does gain access to the space, being prepared to react. Maybe distracting that person, random movement, anything that will buy students and staff time inside of that classroom space or that office space in an effort to evacuate. There are times when somebody in that space may choose to engage the intruder and attempt to subdue them, or try to save other people in the room. I'm aware of situations where that's happened successfully. Again, ALICE doesn't promote that, what they're really trying to do is find ways out of that situation, and try to minimize injury and or fatalities. E, lastly, stands for evacuate, when the opportunity presents itself, finding a way to effectively and safely evacuate from the building. That may be an orderly evacuation if the threat is neutralized, it may be finding other ways to evacuate the building, whether that's on the second floor, climbing out of a window, and then safely getting down to the ground, and then going to a reunification point, or getting out a back door in a building like high school that is so large, that may be a lot easier than trying to get out of a side door or a back door in one of our smaller elementary schools. So it's really finding the safest, most strategic way to evacuate from the building. We've provided ALICE training in the past, that's something that we coordinate with first responders, we review that annually. One part of the annual review is showing the video, I included two links here, you guys, the board, have seen these. I'll start just a short clip, just especially for our media representative, just so you 've got an idea what it looks like, and then these are things that we show our students and our staff, so I'll be glad to send you links to those, just so that you can take a look at them. One of our younger administrators, youthful administrators kicks this one off.
At Sycamore Community School District 427, we want our students and staff to be safe. This is why we practice our safety drills a couple times every year. In this video, we will tell you some of the things you can do to be safe if a dangerous person ever comes into one of our schools, and we have one of our school resource officers to tell you more.
As school resource officers, our goal is to build relationships with students and staff, and to make sure that they're safe when they come to school. Part of this is making sure they know how to respond to a dangerous person. In our schools, we use ALICE training to keep us prepared. The A stands for alert, because we have to alert each other when there is a dangerous person. L stands for lockdown, which means to close the door, turn out the lights, help put desks, chairs, and bookcases in front of the door, and stay very quiet in the classroom. I stands for inform, because we have to share anything we know about where the dangerous person is, or what they're doing. C stands for counter, which means to distract the dangerous person by throwing things at them, moving around, and making loud noises. And E stands for evacuate, which means to leave the school and run to the rally point. If a dangerous person ever comes into one of our schools, help will be on the way very quickly, but before help gets to the school, each of us has to respond to the dangerous person in the best way possible to keep ourselves safe. Safety experts say that ALICE training prepares us and can keep us safe from a dangerous person. Let's take a closer look.
Evacuation means to leave school and run to the rally point. You can leave the school through doors or windows, or exit onto roofs if you're in a two-story building. Once you leave, you should run away in a zigzag pattern and make lots of noise. Your teacher will tell you where your school's rally point is, which is where you should run to meet the police, but the most important thing is to get out of school. If you are in a restroom, in a hallway, or outside your classroom, run to the rally point or hide from the dangerous person so they cannot find you. Look for the police officers and firefighters coming to help, and go to them if you are alone. If you can't evacuate, the next best option might be to lock down. A lockdown is when you close and lock a classroom door, and put desks or other items in front of it. If the door has a closing arm, this can be tied with a belt or rope. You should turn off the lights, stay very quiet, and stand away from the windows and the door. If you can't evacuate or lock down, and the dangerous person is close to you, countering can distract the dangerous person so you can get away. To counter the dangerous person, you should make lots of noise, move around, and throw items at them like pencils, books, or other supplies. Countering is not fighting, it is distracting a dangerous person so you can get away.
There are many ways to respond if there's ever a dangerous person in one of our schools. The best way to respond depends on where you are and what you're doing at the time. We hope that this video has given you information to keep you safe. Thanks for watching.
There's a K5 version of that video, there's a high school, middle school version of that video, that's shown at the beginning of the square, the staff, and the staff works with students, so they understand the protocols, because they're a little bit different in each of the buildings. Buildings have different shapes, sizes, things like that. In addition, one annual requirement for public schools is conducting safety drills, that's typically the fire drills and the tornado drills that we all grew up with, but now, unfortunately, we also have intruder drills. So these are drills that students practice with staff. In addition, law enforcement and emergency responder involvement is part of the requirement, so oftentimes, they're present, in smaller communities, that may not be possible, but in Sycamore, it is possible, so emergency responders are present during the planning of the drill, and then the completion of the drill. Again, they're also well-versed in the procedures themselves, so it's great to have them on the field. I'm going to stop there, didn't want to go into too much more detail, but wanted to just share a little bit, reassure the board, as well as the public and media, that these are things that we practice, we've been in contact with the Sycamore Police Chief, Mr. Chief Winters, about our practices and policies, and there's always some tweaks that happen along the way, and there are changes to best practice, and every time there's a crisis, we learn a little bit from that. As those things come up, then we ramp up our plans and revise them, but at this point, I'm going to pause, didn't want to share any more information than that, but we'll be glad to answer any questions from the board.
I just want to make a comment that there's been a crisis plan and a crisis group through many, many, many years. We had the southeast, the southeast bus accident, we had killings at NIU, it's been around, I just want you to know, this is not like the first, you know, time we've had a crisis group, and there've been suicides that we've had to, you know, have the crisis team get together, so please know it's been a, it's been a long time in this district, and I just want you to know, it's not just because, obviously, the intruder part is new, but, you know, prior to that, we definitely had a group of people always on, ready to go if anything happened in the district, so it's nothing new, Sycamore's been a very good, a lot of having a crisis plan for a long time.
Steve, I appreciate the presentation, appreciate you answering some of my more specific questions outside of the meeting. I think just another point that I thought was important, and probably my biggest concern is, is that just making sure the district is being proactive and learning what's happening, what's out there, as things evolve, situations change. Unfortunately, as some of these things happen, and, you know, information is learned and gathered, how do we respond, how are we getting access to that information, and are we? And I think you said it's a lot of my questions, and saying that we are being proactive and things like that, so I think that that's an important thing for, I think, for the community to know as well, is that, you know, this isn't a reactive environment, this is not, you don't want to be reactive in the situation, you want to be, obviously, as proactive as possible, and learn from some of these tragedies that have happened, and then not even specifically, you know, active shooter situations, but I mean, a fire, I mean, a fire is a big deal, if no one knows what to do, so, and it can turn tragic in a hurry. So, no, I just appreciate all the information you provided me this week, and the presentation tonight.
Yeah, I think that one of the things that impressed me about Sycamore when I arrived here was the strong relationship with Sycamore PD, and the two SROs, the school resource officers, that are in, one here at the high school, one at the middle school, they serve a variety of roles, but one of them is being a liaison for crisis planning. We work with more than just the SROs during that process, but I just want to highlight, having them in the building all the time is a huge asset, so that's a big part of the plan. We get a lot of information from law enforcement when situations happen, again, sometimes it's just little tweaks, and sometimes it's just learning that in some cases, schools didn't or couldn't follow a plan to the letter of the plan as much as they would like, so it's, there's always something to learn, and we try to implement and tweak our best practices as the best we can.
So, just a quick question for you, Steve, I'm kind of building off of James's point, hopefully you guys can hear me okay.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Not at all.
I've been muted for my coughs and sneezes, so hopefully that's been okay. What does the audit process look like for safety in the school district? Can you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, so I would say it's ongoing, it's not something we do every three years, or five years, or anything like that, it's something that we review on an ongoing basis. Annually, we're required to review the crisis plan, that's one of the things that the state requires, but I would say it's ongoing, so as events happen, as training changes, you know, we become aware of that, we don't wait for that annual review, if there are things that we need to implement right away, we work through the process to do that. So I would say that the audit process really is ongoing, it's, annual is required, but it happens throughout each and every school year.
Okay, so there is, in terms of like a formal auditing process, there is an annual formal audit that goes through, and in that audit, are they like checking to make sure all the door locks are working, is that like, is that state mandated, what that audit entails?
So, the plan is audited, as a requirement in the school codes, the plan itself has to be audited on an annual basis. Physically walking the buildings to check locks and things like that, that is not part of the required audit, but that's something that we do on a regular basis. You know, as we notice things aren't working, that's reported, there's enough movement throughout buildings, and enough administrators and staff in and out of doors, you know, checking windows that open and close, and checking latches, a lot of that gets reported, you know, naturally, so as those reports are made, you know, we go through and fix things, but I would say, to the best of my knowledge, there's not a point in time where somebody, or a committee, or a group physically walks through every classroom, checks every door, things like that, I think there's enough movement throughout the buildings that those sorts of things get reported pretty routinely.
Okay, and last piece on this, sorry, I'm not going to end here, the counter piece to the ALICE plan, I know they're talking about, it's obviously not ideal, or anything like that, and throwing like, you know, I think a ruler was used as an example, do we have any formal equipment that we are allowing access to our teachers and staff to use for the countermeasure?
The ALICE trainers really emphasize getting your hands on whatever is close to you at that moment. Now, every classroom has a bucket with safety supplies, crisis sorts of supplies, if I remember, it's a bright orange Home Depot bucket that stands out, I believe there is a brick for a heavy item, and every one of those buckets, that's part of the purpose of that, is something that could be thrown, or used as kind of a weapon, so to speak, but the ALICE trainers that I've seen and listened to, they really emphasize grabbing whatever you have close to you, and it's not necessarily the weight of the object to do damage to stop the intruder, it really is about distracting. In a crisis situation like that, two or three seconds can make a huge difference, so whether it's an eraser, you know, I say eraser, most of, most of us probably don't know what erasers are anymore. Back in the day, we used to have racers on chalkboards, and, you know, things like that, even if it's lightweight, if it just stuns or distracts the intruder for a second or two, it can make a huge difference in getting a large number, if not all of the individuals out of the classroom, so the trainers really emphasize, pick whatever's closest to you, you'd be surprised what an intruder will wince from, or turn away from, just because that's a natural reaction, so we don't, we don't supply anything, they're just trying to grab whatever's closest to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I think it's of note that we were, our district was early a doctor of the ALICE program, it was brought to us by the SROs, and they saw to it that a lot of our administrators got actually live action training, and they came back and reported to the board, and I'm glad it wasn't me going through that training, because it sounded kind of harrowing. I don't know, Jim, were you there for that training? What was that like?
I mean, they, they don't use live ammo, but I mean, they're making the noises, they're showing the lasers, and they're like, we see what would happen if you, you know, when it's real, instead of like, we do it without anybody there now, but I mean, when you do it with an actual intruder that has a weapon, it's a lot scarier, even if they're not shooting, I mean, it makes it feel more real.
Yeah, but that's rather reassuring that people have had a chance to experience that, our administrators have had a chance to experience that, and then you can take that experience and build off of that with other, with other staff, so.
And they show you how when you throw something at somebody, it gives you that time, because they have to defend what you threw at them, which, again, it only gives them maybe 10 seconds, but 10 seconds, you can do a lot of stuff. If everybody's throwing something at them, then they have more time.
I've witnessed live, live training with law enforcement officials that know it's an exercise, know it's not real, been in the buildings before, and walked past where the intruder, or where individuals are multiple times, because their adrenaline is moving, even though it's just a drill for them, and they made 30% mistakes on average. So think of a student, or a teacher, or a staff member, you don't know what you're going to do in that situation, you think you will do the right thing, but you really don't know, you don't even know if you can dial your phone. So, I know we have other systems that help support this as well, and we were early adopters of those as well. The one question I have is, I can't remember, in that safety plan, have we addressed one of the areas, and it wouldn't probably be in that plan, because those are posted in the building, but do we have a protocol, and I don't need you to expose it, but for what I think is one of our most, now, one of our most vulnerable points, when a student is getting on or off a bus, particularly out on a route as opposed to at in school, may not be necessarily intruder, but it could be a custodial situation, do we have protocols for that, and do we train our bus drivers on that?
That's a really good question, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm aware of situations where a student has been, you know, there's somebody waiting that they think is a parent, I can tell you, having been a sub-bus driver, where you don't know adults, they look like they're supposed to be there, but I'm aware of situations where it wasn't somebody who was from, it was a non-custodial parent, so I doubt I'd have to follow up and get an answer, I can work with our transportation director.
Yeah, we're actually going to work
We're actually going to work with Lacey.
I actually just emailed them, I'm like, we do a safety training, you know? That would be great. Yeah, they do radio in, and they don't recognize a person. They'll radio before they let the kid off. You know, we've had parents frustrated with that, but they do. And if it's someone unfamiliar, we call and speak to who we normally speak to, and they give us permission. So we have kept kids on the bus because of an unfamiliar person.
I'm just thinking, we don't think about it, but that's a very vulnerable point in time. When you're getting on and off the bus, particularly off-site or on a trip. So I know there's companies out there that have tracking with little pads and stuff, you know, different ones that you can look at to sign people in and out and that kind of stuff. And I know that this organization here is trying to figure out a way to be able to track a bus so that as you're going somewhere, you can still use the same type of devices to notify, not necessarily an intruder, it could be a hazmat, you know, maybe approaching a train crash or a car accident that has a hazmat problem, and you're stuck there and you can't move the bus. So the trouble they're having is how do you make that call to the appropriate jurisdiction while you're traveling? Because you may travel through 60 between here and Chicago. So that's the challenge, but I think we probably should be looking at what protocols we have for that, because I think that's a big point of vulnerability for all school districts right now. Since we're the lead around the other two, let's be the lead around this.
Chris, what's left over after you've found everything?
Yeah, exactly.
All we can do is prepare, you know? Prepare and train. And I think the fact that we have been early adopters for safety systems that have later become sort of universally accepted, that that's a good sign that we're doing our homework in terms of keeping up with what's out there and what's available and what's the best and newest information about how to deal with some of these threats. Any other questions for me? All right. For the superintendent's report. Next item then is open discussion and future agenda items. The issues for open discussion.
I know on our future agenda list, we had back from February, bringing the nurses in at some point. Obviously, with schools in session, but I was wondering if we had a timeframe when we're going to take care of that.
We don't, with the summer break, everybody kind of scattered, but it is still on the future agenda items, so we'll try to get them in there this fall.
I just want too much time to go by to recognize the amount of work that they had to do and may have to do again.
Other issues, observations, questions?
I was able to visit Lacey in the Transportation Department before the meeting. She invited me. She mentioned that maybe we could all go and visit, and address that, that may be something we could do.
Oh, we have big changes down there, so I'd love to invite everyone to come see it and, you know, look at the fleas and what's up and coming, and what we'd like to do in the future, and, you know, just kind of get to see one of the super important but very behind-the-scenes department. Yeah, it'd be cool.
And the space down there is, it could be a great board admin retreat.
Oh, yeah, we could, yeah.
Or a board meeting, yeah.
We could do like a meet and greet too. I mean, I don't know if any of you have ever met the people that are transporting our kids to home school. You know, they are awesome, so, interesting group, so. But they would love to talk about, you know, their value and how much they love, you know, what they're doing and stuff, so that could be something interesting as well, so.
Well, they're very valuable, and so we'd love to hear their stories. I'd love to honor them, let them know that we appreciate them.
Yeah, say about that.
Other issues, future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into an executive session for consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel? Student discipline, matters related to individual students' purchase or needs of a fruit, stake, and imminent litigation?
Salute.
Second.
Roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. All right, we're back in regular session. And is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Salute.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
He's just messing with me now.
You muted?
He's frozen.
Oh, he's frozen.
Okay.
Jones?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Employment Contract as presented?
Salute.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito? DeVito?
He's frozen, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources Educational Programs Employment Contract as presented?
Salute.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes, yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's Employment Contract as presented?
Salute.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
He answered me.
We're ready to pause.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Stand adjourned. Thank you very much.